Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Village of Tinley Park. On this, the third day of January 2017. If you'd all rise and join me in the pledge. Pledge and allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for regular board meeting, Village of Tinley Park, January 3rd, 2017, at 7:30. Trustee Maher.
Here.
Trustee Grady.
Here.
Trustee Penito.
Here.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Present.
Trustee Yonker.
Here.
Trustee Suggs.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
We have a quorum. First item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, consider approval of the minutes of the special village board meeting and the regular village board meeting held on December 20th, 2016. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number three, consider approval of the consent agenda. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Clerk.
Item three, consent agenda. A, consider requests from Misria Cordia to conduct a tag day fundraiser on Friday, April 28th, and Saturday, April 29th, 2017, at certain intersections in the Village of Tinley Park. B, consider request of Knights of Columbus to conduct a tag day fundraiser on Fridays September 15th, and Saturdays September 16th, 2017, at certain intersections in the Village of Tinley Park. C, consider release of minutes for miscellaneous executive sessions from March 2000 to March 2016. D, payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $1,254,042 and .40 cents, as listed on the vendor board approval reports dated December 23rd and December 30th, 2016.
Anybody on the board have any questions or want to have anything removed? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call on consent agenda. Trustee Maher.
Yea.
Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Item number four, we have a swearing in ceremony for Police Officer Vincent Merman. Please step up.
Vincent J. Merman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
The ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations with that. I'd like to do the law enforcement oath of honor. Please repeat after me. On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
On my honor, I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character with the public trust.
My character with the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will uphold the Constitution.
My community and the agency I serve.
My community and the agency I serve.
Hopefully, our family here can introduce them.
I would, yeah.
Okay.
Let's start with my fiancee, Kate.
Hi.
What do I say?
My future in-laws, Kathy and Chuck. And then, future in-law's little sister, sister-in-law, Laura, and brother-in-law, Billy, and future nephew, Kevin.
Very good. Thank you. And welcome to Tinley Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I move to consider adopting ordinance number 2017-0-001, authorizing an amendment to a deed restriction for the Paus property located at 8301 West 191st Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. The petitioner, Paus, also known as Peoples Animal Welfare Society, is seeking release of restrictive coven on the property located, as again, at 8301 191st Street. This deed was recorded transferring the property from Brookside Glen Developer to Paus. Paus has been an integral part of our community. We're sad to see them leaving for Mokina. They are going to be locating to a larger facility. I think that's all that I have, though.
Greenhouse remain the same.
Yeah, our services with, or their services to the Tinley Park will remain the same. Looking forward to their continued service to us.
This item is up for final adoption. Anybody from the board have any questions about it? Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Let the record reflect that we're none, Mr. Clerk.
Item five, adoption of ordinance 001. On roll call, trustee Maher.
Yea.
Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yea.
Trustee Suggs.
Motion carries. Item number six, trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. This time, I move to consider adopting ordinance number 2017-0-002, granting a special use permit to allow for residential unit above commercial space in the B3 general business and commercial zoning district located at 6787 159th Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Our petitioner, Kevin Williams of MAC Company, is seeking approval for a special use permit for residents to be located above a principal commercial use, again, at 6787 159th Street. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on December 1st, 2016, and voted in favor of the request for the special use with a few conditions, and they are as follows. That the outstanding change of ownership conditions be completed by the property owner prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy. That a landscape plan be submitted to the staff by December 15, 2016, and an escrow or bond be provided to guarantee the installation of landscaping by January, pardon me, June 1, 2017. And that the existing non-conforming freestanding sign be altered to meet the village's current sign regulations, or be replaced with a new sign meeting the village's current sign regulations.
Anybody from the board have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions or comments? Let the record reflect that we're none, Mr. Clerk.
Item six, on ordinance 002, for roll call, trustee Maher.
Yea.
Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Item number seven, trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. This time, I can move to consider adopting ordinance number 2017-0-003, granting a special use permit to allow for a commercial indoor recreation use greater than 3,500 square feet in the B2 community shopping Bremen Town Mall PUD zoning district located at 6805 159th Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Our petitioner, Michael Kosielik of United Athletics, is seeking approval for a special use permit to operate a commercial indoor recreation use greater than 3,500 square feet. Again, this was in front of the Plan Commission with a public hearing on December 1st, 2016, and was recommended for the special use with the following conditions. That the petitioner provide security cameras. That they make improvements to the facade, including the erection of an awning on the access door on the east facade, and the removal of an opaque covering on all the windows. And that crosswalks be implemented on the exterior of the tenant space per staff's recommendation, and a stop sign be located on the northeast corner controlling the east and west traffic.
Anybody have any questions from the board about this one? Anybody from the public have any questions or comment? Let the record reflect that we're none, Mr. Clerk.
Item number seven, ordinance 003, on final and roll call, trustee Maher.
Yea.
Trustee Grady.
Yea.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yea.
Motion carries. Item number eight, trustee Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ask the board to consider for first reading ordinance number 2017-0-004, authorizing entry into a lease with the State of Illinois Department of Central Management Services concerning property located at 6825 173rd Place.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Since 1998, the village has leased approximately 2,900 square feet of space in the Dunn Public Safety Building to the State of Illinois for use by the Illinois State Police. The prior lease terms were for three, three-year periods. The new lease would extend the agreement by five additional months with an expiration date of May 31, 2017. The total lease value is $8,130.08. This item was discussed at the November 1st, 2016 Public Safety Committee meeting and recommended for approval.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, trustee Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd ask the board to consider on first reading, resolution number 2017-R-001, adopting a strategic plan for the Village of Tinley Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Over approximately the last 12 months, the village has taken the necessary steps to complete a strategic planning process. Benefits of adopting a strategic plan for the village include, but are not limited to the following. Document strategic priorities of the village board. Provide direction and accountability to staff. Communication tool with residents. Prioritization of limited resources and funding. And sets the future course of action for the village. The strategic plan is based on a process that included feedback from a community survey, focus groups, and two-day village, two-day village board workshop held earlier this year. It is the intent of the village to discuss the strategic plan on a triannual basis during the April, August, and December committee of the whole meetings. This matter was discussed at the December 13th, 2016 committee of the whole meeting and recommended for approval.
It's for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed, but I'd like to say why.
Sure.
Although I understand that the management and the staff would like clear direction on where they want to go and what they want to do, I feel that this particular strategic plan contains elements that I'm not necessarily for, as I've stated in the several meetings earlier. And by adopting this, I would basically be, you know, saying that I'm behind several of these things, especially in regard to the mental health center and the South Street project. So, I'm going to vote no.
All right. All in favor, sign if you're ready, saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2017-0-005, amending Title 11, Chapter 112, Section 112.22, of Tinley Park Municipal Code for the addition of one class AV liquor license for the Dragon Palace Restaurant located at 7122 West 171st Street. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. And again, nothing against the vendor, I'm just not too excited about the spread of these licenses.
Motion carries. Thank you. This point, I'd like to open the meeting up for comments from board and staff, and I'd like to start this one myself, because I think there are just some events that have transpired probably the last four weeks that I think deserve some comment. It's clear that some residents are closely following the legal issues concerning the lawsuits involving the federal government and the developer Buckeye. I'm not surprised by the concern as both legal arguments involve the issue of housing, a matter that is near and dear to the citizens' hearts, because for most village citizens, their homes are the most important asset they own, as our home is for my wife and I. Lawsuits can have three outcomes: win, lose, or settle. We have skilled counsel representing us in these suits. I intend to listen to counsel advice throughout this legal process, and then ask your duly-elected trustees to make decisions that are in the best interest of the entire village. Legal arguments can lead to feelings of anger or fear amongst some people. I promise you that I will not allow selfish or non-rational emotions cloud my judgment in the matters before this village. You deserve fair and thoughtful decisions by your elected leaders. We will keep you posted as these matters go forward. Without jeopardizing our plans and conversations at this point, I'd ask our village's legal counsel to provide an update on the matter.
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. So I do want to note, I prepared a few things after, as the mayor asked, to try to update to the best we can on some of the recent activities in the Buckeye lawsuit. I just do want to note that, obviously, there are now two lawsuits, as I'll explain in a minute. They are pending litigation, which puts certain restrictions, legal restrictions, on what this board can talk about at this time. So, with that, let me try to give you an update the best I can. So on November 23rd, 2016, the Department of Justice filed a lawsuit against the village over the Buckeye development. In its complaint, the Department of Justice alleged that the village engaged in illegal practices under the Fair Housing Act by not allowing Buckeye to build its original proposed development, with the allegations basically mirroring what was said by Buckeye in its complaint. The village has until the end of January to file a responsive pleading to the Department of Justice's complaint. With regard to the Buckeye lawsuit, the parties currently are engaged in discovery, which is essentially the exchange of information that may be relevant to a lawsuit. As with most litigation, the parties recently had some informal settlement discussions, but those discussions were very preliminary. To the extent there would be a proposed settlement offer by Buckeye that the village board would consider voting on, the public would be informed of the same prior to the board acting. Currently, the village is continuing to defend against both Buckeyes and the Department of Justice's lawsuit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody from the board have any comment or questions?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I find it very concerning that, I feel that every member of this board, whether it's close session, shouldn't be discussing anything, a pending lawsuit, especially this, of this magnitude, discussing it with public, friends, whatever. What happens in close session should stay in close session until the courts handle it. I mean, to discuss this with residents or anyone else is absurd.
Anybody else from the board have any comment or question?
I have got a banana in that.
That's okay. You've got the floor.
With the approval of trustee Vandenberg, and he's hearing this for the first time, on the Paus issue number five, you graciously said it's been here for a long time, and with your approval, I'd like to include in the minutes that Paus was sponsored initially over a three-year struggle by Mrs. Esther Hug, and put that in the minutes. She struggled in the early 1970s for her dogs in this town and other animals, and your comment triggered my memory on that, and if you have no objection, I'd like to include that in the minutes.
I have no objection. Thanks for the historical knowledge.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board have any comments? Anybody from the staff? Anybody from the public have any comments? Mr. Paus.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Good, good to hear. Well, I wanted to thank Counselor Conley for the update. It was a nice little summary there. I also want to thank Counselor Conley for, you came in around May, right, Counselor Conley? Ish, April? I apologize, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yeah.
But I wanted to say that in your time here, I really appreciate what you've done. I was thinking back to like when we were working on the public comment rules, you know, which was, if memory serves, that was triggered by the Attorney General writing, I think, one, not one, but two warnings to us, correct? And then, we, you know, as a village, I always liked to, you know, the village made a decision like, hey, we actually have to address that, and then you, and I believe Clerk Ray, at a Citizens of the Whole Meeting invited citizens to go and meet with you, and you, of course, Counselor Conley. And, you know, I came up with like my amendment, you had yours, and, you know, kind of like worked out like a compromise. But, you know, like, there was a process to that, and the whole thing is, is that, you know, me, just a ordinary citizen, you, an attorney, you, Clerk Ray, facilitating, you know, having a meeting and having a discussion at that, you know, there was a lot of that went into, I think there were seven items in our public comment, right? So, I want to go back to what's still pending before us, and I know this can't talk about, but there's certain things of the process that I want to go over. So let's talk about the text amendments that still penned before us, to the legacy code. Now, I've really dug in on the legacy code. Now, I've read and read, and I dug up the staff report. I didn't FO you, because I found it on the website. And I read that staff report, which wasn't written by you, right, Paula?
It was written by me.
No, no, the one, May 15, 2015, the one that was, when the, when the, like, when they were originally written.
Oh, the amendment one was not written by you?
Yeah, that one was not written by you.
No, it was not.
And it was not written by Stephanie.
No.
So we know who the other one is, we're not going to mention any names.
Mr. Paus, let me, let me cut you off there. I'm going to ask, again, those text amendments are subject of the lawsuit. I just, if you're going to ask direct questions of staff, again, this is pending litigation, I'm going to, I'm going to direct them not to respond. So I'm not going to be rude, but I am going to direct them not to respond.
Okay. That's fine, don't respond. I'm going to make a statement, then I'm going to sit down. But I do want to say this, that in my review of the minutes of the, of the Citizens of the Whole Meetings before, of any zoning and planning committee meetings before, I didn't see anything directing anything about those text amendments to initiate. Way more was done, when we were just coming up with our little stuff with the public comment, which is a very small thing, it just, and I'm going to go back and research again, but nothing I have seen in the public record shows that anything was directed to go write those. So if I'm an heir, and I go, you're not going to say anything, but I haven't seen anything. So if anybody else has, you know, something they want to bring up, I know you guys are kind of tongue-tied, but I just think that a lot more effort went into writing the public comment than what went into those text amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Paus. Anybody else have any comment? Mr. Eberhart.
Start the time clock, somebody. Yes, sir. One of the most frequently asked questions of 2016 was to Tinley Sparks, you know, we get all these little letters and whatnot, how did Dave Seaman become the acting mayor, and how much taxpayer money is put out for his salary and benefits? The answer to the first question, for all you folks who weren't here in the 2015, is Dave Seaman could be viewed as he appointed himself. The vote on acting mayor was set for June 2nd, 2015. Every elected official knew that trustee Penito was going to be out of the country on a vacation that he had planned before the April election. Team Tinley trustees Maher and Grady voted yes. Citizens trustees Yonker and Vandenberg first asked that the vote be delayed, and when that was denied, they voted no. So trustee Dave Seaman voted yes, for himself, made himself acting mayor. As the South Town described it, it was an expected move. In anticipation, there's always some controversy with these things, in anticipation of this vote, this is how the South Town put it. Over the weekend, in an effort to overcome an apparent obstacle to being named mayor, Seaman said he would not accept a longevity bonus that he would have been entitled to as mayor. Tinley Patch put it this way. Seaman vowed he would not accept the longevity bonus. About a month after vowing not to take the longevity bonus, what was put on the table at a committee meeting? This is what the South Town reports. Acting Tinley Park Mayor Dave Seaman proposed raising base salary for elected village officials and received mixed reactions during a committee meeting Tuesday. And the amount of money that was proposed in the mayor's pay raise would have put a mayor, who was going to be elected, at about the same salary as acting Mayor Seaman would receive with the longevity pay, which he vowed not to take. Well, that's not the case. Acting Mayor Dave Seaman did take the longevity pay. And in fairness, I have to say that, looking at the records, he takes the longevity pay, he keeps enough to pay the taxes on it, and then he refunds the remainder of the longevity pay back, gets a letter from the village treasurer's office saying that it's a charitable contribution, so in essence, my meager understanding of the IRS system, he zeros out the longevity pay for income tax purposes. Why would you do such a thing? It's in the meeting minutes of January, or June 1, 2015. Pension ramifications, IMRF. Your mentor, who you referred to, former Mayor Zabrocki, quadrupled his village salary in 2005, when he retired from Brother Rice. Prior to the uncontested election, he was making about $826 a month. After the uncontested election, his salary amazingly jumped to about $3,300, and it had pension ramifications. But acting Mayor Seaman has another little thing that he has to get by. He has to be elected mayor, because his pension is based on the last 48 months of his salary. He's trying to make it as high as he can, and taking that longevity pay and giving it back and zeroing it out still raises his pension to about what Zabrocki put together. Thirty-five years as an elected official, Zabrocki contributed $35,214 to his IMRF pension. He now collects $38,691 annually. Rest of the money comes from the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Eberhart. You've had your four minutes. We appreciate your comments.
I'll be back, thank you.
I'm sure you will. X-Files, Chapter 2. Next, please. Anybody else here to comment? Yes, Lucas.
So I've got questions. I've noticed that past previous board meetings have been kind of getting rid of certain archaic ordinances. For example, we started board meetings at 7:30 instead of 8 o'clock. We got rid of the mandatory shoveling of the sidewalks of front businesses on Oak Park Avenue. But I was actually wondering on why we have a certain current ordinance that's still in effect. I was wondering why, why is it, I guess, illegal or against, or we have an ordinance against parking, I say, thank you, against street parking in Tinley Park between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM? Because none of the surrounding villages, being Orland Park, Orland Hills, Midlothian, Oak Forest, etc., don't have that.
I don't believe that's accurate, actually. Orland Hills, I mean, Orland Park does have it, I'm not sure about Orland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it has its roots in public safety, actually, and I can let the police speak to it, but.
Yeah, feel free to.
More specifically, but it tends to be one of basically patrolling streets at night. Having a strange car in the street right away brings out, is a red flag that somebody's there that perhaps doesn't belong there. So that's, that's the roots of it. It's also, obviously, for public works, an issue with street cleaning and that, especially with snow.
Okay, well, I mean, I completely understand, as far as street cleaning with snow, I know that, for example, there are certain places that you can't park on the street if you've got more than two inches of snow. But I guess most of my question is that if it's, this whole entire idea is that if it's for safety, or, I guess, patrolling, have we seen a, like, a decrease of, or has it been effective, essentially? Because, I mean, if you compare statistics of, you know, crime within Orland Park versus Tinley Park, Orland Parks, Orland Park is also lower. And like I said, I, previously, I thought that they had no overnight, sorry, previously I thought that they could park overnight on the street, but if I'm wrong, I do apologize, and I was just looking at the, at the Orland Parks.
Can't you call, can't you call non-emergency overnight? Let them know you're parking in the street?
Yeah, no, I was just.
Just not for your time, I think.
You could do it online as well.
Okay. No, just curious. Thank you.
For extraordinary situations. Thank you. Anybody else have any question or comment? Yes, Mr. Stuckley.
Happy New Year to everybody. This is going to go to Mr. Niemeyer.
Is there any ongoing discussion to opt out of Cook County Ordinance 16/4429? Cook County actually lacks the home rule authority to enact. I believe that's what I've been reading. If we're going to move forward with the branding campaign for Oak Park Avenue, I think this ordinance is going to affect a lot of the small businesses, specialty shops or bodegas that actually want to get something going.
Mr. Stuckley, which one is this? I know there's, there's the overtime one, and there's the sick pay one. There are actually two that are.
Yeah, well, the way I read it, it's the same ordinance. Am I wrong?
No, there's, there's actually two different ordinances.
Okay, are we, are we, is there discussions on both of them?
Yes, the Budget and Admin Committee discussed that about 30 or 45 days ago. They asked to bring it back after the first year, once we kind of saw what some other towns were doing. So we've actually got it on a tentative budget and admin, I think, for two weeks from tonight.
Okay, because I know there's, I know some other towns, they've been talking about it. I think maybe northwest suburbs, they're worried about losing business, moving to Lake County, and then us being right next to Will County. I think it's, it would be detrimental if we don't opt out. And I think if we, if we opt out and Tinley plays the lead in this, I think all the other towns would follow us. But as far as like, for like, if we want to get this Oak Park Avenue thing going, it's, I think it's a must that we, that we should opt out. Give the little guy a chance before he gets choked out.
Well, again, the board did discuss it once, and, you know, we'll discuss it again. The deadline really is like the spring before we have to do it, but I expect at least this now. It's on the tentative agenda for two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckley. Anybody else have any questions or comments for the board? Let the record reflect that we're none. A motion to go to executive session is in order. Two, A, discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. B, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against the legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. May I have such a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And Mr. Clerk, please call a roll.
Item 13, roll call on motion to executive session, trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Motion carries. We adjourn to executive session. Don't expect to have any decisions announced at its end. But thank you all for joining us this evening.